Nepal gets most of its food via its southern roadway to India, which was rendered impassable by the earthquake and subsequent landslides. City water mains have been ruptured. Providing even water to 2.5 million people in Kathmandu will be an overwhelming challenge in the short term and will require years of recovery work on very scarce resources. Our local ties with Kathmandu are deep and lasting, highlighted with the formalization of our sister-city relationship back in 1975. Despite the vast distance between us, we quickly recognize that our two cultures have much in common and a great deal to learn from each other. We share a common vision and goal of brotherhood, prosperity, and peace. Over the last four decades, our ties with this remarkable city and its people have been strengthened through delegation visits, collaboration on infrastructure and utility projects, education initiatives, and cultural and gift exchanges. We are very fortunate to have people in our community who have lived in or visited Nepal and have a deep affection for the country, including Councilor Taylor, who represented the city of Eugene as part of an official delegation several years ago. Their work to maintain this connection keeps Kathmandu very dear to our hearts and minds, particularly in this time of great need. Please join me now in observing a moment of silence for those who were lost and in support of those who remain to rebuild their lives and their communities. We know they will triumph in spirit over this tragedy. These are some things that...
Thank you for that statement. I think you're certainly right about the spirit. When I was there in 2000, they talked about, I saw, monuments and buildings that had been, part of it was thousands of years old, another hundreds, another more recent. They said that they take it as an opportunity to rebuild when something is destroyed. But as far as our sister-city relationship is concerned, I know we want to send them our condolences, our best wishes, but I hope we can also send money. And I think that, I hope that we can take money from our contingency fund or wherever we can get it and send to them. And I, the city manager, is that possible?
You know, it's one of those things, if the council chooses to send dollars to the community over there, of course, we will find the dollars within our budget to do that.
Well, I hope that we can arrange to do that at an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
I also want you to know that donation links, information, and photos are on our website. Donation links and information will be out via social media. We have our comments tonight. I'm sending a letter to the mayor there. And we will send updates via email once links are ready. And we'll keep working on this issue. It matters a great deal to us. Thank you. All right. Public forum is next. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have 10 people signed up. First up is Wayne Martin, followed by John Brown.
Hope not. Greetings. I'm Reverend Wayne Martin, retired pastor. I live in George Brown's district. My address is 1223 Washington Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mayor Percy, I was at the meeting where you, back in October, were encouraging people to come up with, as you put them, asks. Somebody pointed out to me that beware of anyone who uses the word "ask" as a noun. I didn't know what that might have meant. But it was new to me, and it's not been new to me anymore. I did do some asking. I took you seriously. Just after that, in October, I went to see Commissioner Pat Farr, and I gave him three asks. They had to do with three possible sites of county land that he could consider taking to the commissioners as a possible bedding ground for six months until the cold weather was over. And to my deep satisfaction, he gave me my third favorite ask. However, I think it was probably, in hindsight, the very best one. And as you know, it's the one that we've been running as Nightingale Health Sanctuary, and I'm grateful. And in November, I asked Chief Kearns if he might meet with Michael Carrigan, myself, and Ken Newbeck to talk about some ways in which there could be some more flexibility in the way police were dealing with homeless people. He followed by asking David Knatt to relate to us, and he has been until he recently left for Chicago on a training. And that's been a really positive role that David has played and has helped some unsanctioned campers feel more secure. And then in February, I thought, nobody's been talking to the business community that I know of about homelessness. And I approached Jerry Gatos, who's an attorney you may know and a member of my church, and he called a meeting of several of his friends for his office in March, including three commercial real estate brokers and some other business owners. One of those was John Brown, who expressed probably understandable frustration with homeless people because of all the debris. And I tried to help him understand that maybe it's not all homeless people. And he was patient and understanding, and he met with three homeless people and myself to discuss the possibility of a linkage between the homeless community and maybe trolling the river. And why not work with Michelle Emmons, who is an upstanding member of the River Keepers Group? And beyond that, I'd like you to consider some of the proposals that John might make. That's for your attention.
Thank you very much. John Brown is next, followed by John Dotson.
Mayor Percy, members of council, John Brown, Ward 5. Again, always I thank you first for your service to our community. I really appreciate it, and I know not exactly what it's like, but somewhat what it's like. That said, following up what Wayne said, they summoned me to a meeting a while ago, and I've got enough meetings, but I took on another one. And we brainstormed a little bit about, you know my passion. My passion is to keep the waters from getting polluted. And I gave you a little picture of what we found there yesterday. We just happened to be painting out some bulgarities off the Ferry Street Bridge, and that's what it looked like underneath there. Well, that said, what we're trying to do is maybe address the problem with maybe putting, for lack of a better term, a couple hobbit houses, one on the North Bank and one on the South Bank, one maybe in Alton Baker Park and one maybe in Skinner's Butte Park. We'll pay for them. We'll fund them. We'd like a little help. We'll give the people through St. Vinnie's, Terry McDonald has talked about it, but use these individuals that may not have a place now to live, give them a little place to live with the bare necessities and a bicycle and a cellphone, and have them just hand out notices to the people that are setting up camp on the river, saying this isn't going to be tolerated. Punch in a GPS and then notify somebody. It's your land. I see the irony of, I watch how meticulous now we're addressing stormwater. We're having stormwater retention basins, we're having flood control, we have erosion control on construction sites. Yet, you look at the pictures and you see what, you know, it's all to prevent the water from getting polluted before it gets to the river, but yet, this problem persists, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And I'm not going to go away. You figured that out. But I'd like to see if we can't be more reactive than proactive. And, you know, people are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars every year cleaning this up. And if this is a pilot project that works, it's great. We're talking about expanding it. And if it doesn't, you know, you're not out anything. But we've got to try something, because right now, it's not working. There's been a couple tents within 50 feet of Ferry Street Bridge for over a week now. And, you know, I can see them from the bridge, I can see them from any place, and apparently nobody else can see them, because I know what it's going to be like when they leave. I do. And it's going to be a real challenge to clean it up. So hopefully, you will listen to more, and they'll approach you with a written plan and a financing plan and the blessings of people like, hopefully, St. Vinnie's. So we've talked to Terry and Wayne Martin and others. So thank you very much.
Thank you. John Dotson is next, followed by William Ward. Before you start, I just want to remind people in the audience that we don't have signs in here. Okay? Thank you. But you have signs on you, and we can see them. Go ahead.
John Dotson, Northeast Gene area. I have a letter in my possession, which also Mayor Kitty Percy has had and other people in this administration since 2006. It was a letter from Paula Taylor in the El Cog about the petitions we had submitted. And it says that the signatures on the petition submitted did not contain the signatures of the residences of the affected territory, therefore, no vote would be held. And that makes sense. But these affected territories had streets and rights-of-ways within those boundaries. And one commonality between all the signatures on the petition and the residences within the affected territory is their properties, all of them actually contacted the streets and rights-of-ways held within. So the question became, where did this elector of the property get his authority to move from the county streets and rights-of-ways and transfer them into the city streets and rights-of-ways? That's a pretty powerful exchange. Well, they got it from the Oregon State Legislature, through the Boundary Commission. And that's where our objections came, and that's where we are today, because they're still in the city. So it's recognized by the state, by the city, by the county, that these electors, whose property only contacted streets and rights-of-ways, voted over the governance of the streets and rights-of-ways and moved them. Now, these people out here on West 11th, people up on Willamette Street, have projects ongoing within the streets and rights-of-ways. Somebody has told them that they have no rights to vote on those projects, because nobody lives in the streets and rights-of-ways. Yet, this document validates for the second time that an elector had that authority. And that authority was given by, again, by the state legislature. So how can it be one elector gets something no other electors get? Well, that's called disenfranchising a voter. That is a federal statute. You may not disenfranchise voters. They are all equal. And that authority was given to one, it's given to all. I'm hoping to see some petitions come forward on the EMX project, Willamette Street, and I think they will. And the fact that all they have to do is make sure their property contacts those streets and rights-of-ways. And that's something I submitted last week. You have all the documents. I want to bring it to your attention tonight, because I think you're going to end up in federal court if you want to challenge not giving them a vote. Thank you.
William Ward is next, followed by Sterling Rand.
I'm William Ward. I'm in Betty Taylor's ward. I am 100% against any urban growth boundary expansion for housing or factories. In housing, in expanding the urban growth boundary for housing, it will only, short-term, profit our local builders and out-of-state builders from beautiful, big houses on bigger, big lots, which local homeless, low-income people won't be able to afford and will probably only go to out-of-state. Rich people come up here to retire and want to live in the country outside our city. And it's going to really take away our very valuable farmland and our livability in our city and the general health of our community. As far as helping the low-income people find housing, I'm very much behind the different types of short-term housing that is going on now, even some of these small houses. But as far as spending big money and for long-term improvements so people can move into another form of housing where they can own it, I'd like us all to look back 100 years, 150 years to the East Coast, England, row houses, multi-unit houses, where they share two or more walls, where you can have one to two, three-bedroom houses, full basements with attics for storage, and even garages with common walls. And some people don't want garages or cars, and some could have yards, and some people don't want yards. I know a lot of people don't want to cut grass. And there's so many things we can do, but we got to, and not only that, but it would be very much cheaper to build those with the common walls, and the money you save in building them. You could upgrade the houses to come close to platinum status far as energy saving. They'd be cheaper to maintain, and of course, cheaper to afford. They'd be cheaper to heat, and they would create livability. I mean, these houses on the East Coast, as I said, they've been around for 100, 150 years, and people have great lives. They live in them, and there's healthy communities. Above all, I'd like to stress, don't go expand your urban growth boundary. We've got to keep livability. In fact, just the other night, Portland, there was a show on Portland, Oregon, how that, once a year, people come from all around the world just to have a tour through Portland, because Portland, Oregon is listed as one of the best cities in the world in the United States as livability, where they've controlled their urban growth boundary through design and planning and not just spread out and create urban deserts like Detroit, Sacramento, Reno, even Bend. We've got a special place here, and let's keep it all within the city, but make the city beautiful inside and not expand out. Thank you.
Thank you. Sterling Rand is next, followed by Kristen Brandt.
My name is Sterling Rand, and Mayor Percy, thank you so much for the response so quickly to my email. Appreciate that. I'm here to talk about ride-sharing again. I spend some time talking to people, going to the bars at night, and they drive, and they drive home. And in questioning them, why? Because they don't want to wait for a half hour, 45 minutes for a taxi. But they used to not drive, because they could take a ride-share and get a ride-share in a few minutes. And it was very beneficial. And since so much of economy rides on social media and the internet, it's new technology, and it's inevitable that ride-share will be here. Can we not get it done now, please? Thank you.
Kristen Brandt is next, followed by Art Bowman.
Hi, I'm Kristen Brandt, and I'm here on behalf of the Occupy the Universal Right to Survive Camp. And just to give you a little update on what we've been doing lately. In spite of our many moves, we have organized the camp even more so than we had it before, creating different crews to take care of the things that keep the camp comfortable and safe and clean. We're also organizing day labor pool, so that's something that we're making available. And we're working to coordinate with other possibly businesses and nonprofits to see where we can fit in with some of the skills and resources that the people in the camp have. I wanted to say that we live in the Ninth Ward, the ward of the dispossessed, who are citizens of this city but have really no place to go and stay, which is so important to being able to carry on anything beyond just moving around. So you'll certainly see more of us, and we just wanted to come every once in a while and let you know what we're working on. Thank you.
Art Bowman is next, followed by John Borowski.
Art Bowman, First Ward. As you may or may not be aware, there's been a pretty intense police crackdown in the downtown area. I've managed to observe a lot of this firsthand. If you get up at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, you can see, you could see people huddled there, mostly runaway teenagers, sitting in corners with blankets. Now, the police are temporarily going easy on the camping ban because of a threatened lawsuit. If they arrest people between 10:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning, they create potential plaintiffs. But I've seen the police descend like vultures upon these teenagers at 6:00 in the morning, give them citations, arrest them for minute quantities of marijuana, and otherwise dispose of them and drive them out of downtown. There have been other things going on, and it seems to have been largely successful in many areas. What is the natural result? One thing we've seen is increased camping by the river, which leads to some of the problems up here. I've talked to people who walk the river regularly, and they've seen people camping in places they never have before. This is the result of that crackdown. So in a way, you've created the problem that's being addressed here, or at least your police department has. And to the extent you have oversight, you have. I'm not sure that hiring homeless people to be police informants is a practical or moral decision. And if they're going to be living there, I urge you to examine the potential legal ramifications. Will these people be employees? If so, of who? Will they be independent contractors? Will they be paid minimum wage? What is the liability? It may come as a surprise to you, but the position of police informer is not a highly esteemed one within the homeless community. If they're staying there, there's potential danger. Who will be responsible for their danger if they're legally allowed to camp? I've heard this proposal, and I think you need to look at it, not just from a legal standpoint, but from a moral standpoint, because I find it to be deeply disturbing. Thank you for your time.
John Borowski is next, followed by Tara Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here today to talk about the upcoming budget process that you guys will be entering into coming this Wednesday. The city manager has put out his FY16 budget, and things are looking pretty good. It's a stable budget. It's not exactly where we want to get to, but I think great progress has been made down that road. One of the things that I'd like to talk to you about is the opportunity for public engagement with you as far as the budget process is here. I'm on the interested parties list, and I got the schedule of what the meetings are going to be. You're going to have a presentation on Wednesday, and then the following Tuesday will be a public testimony, deliberation, and action, leaving only one day for the public to give testimony on the budget that's going to be put forth. Obviously, there will be another public hearing when it comes to you as far as council goes, when it's actually acted on. But for me, when I was a citizen member of the Budget Committee, one of the things that I took away from that was the input that I got from the citizens that would come out and testify. And I think that by limiting it to one meeting and three minutes per person, sometimes it's only two minutes per person because of time restraints, I think is really a disservice to the citizens of this community. I think that, like I said, when I was a member of that committee, that's where I, those were the people that helped me to decide on how I was going to vote on some of the complex issues that go into putting a budget together. So I just wanted to put that out there for you guys to think about that, perhaps talk to the chair, see if there, I know it's tough to put more meetings on your schedule. You guys do enough as it is with meetings and listening to the public. But I think that this is an area that has kind of been getting less and less, you know, the amount of input that the citizenry has on the budget process. I just wanted to bring it to your attention and let you think about it. Thank you.
Tara Williams is next, followed by Sue Searleupi.
Good evening, Tara Williams. I'm in George Brown's ward. I am a volunteer with Occupy Medical, and while I will be discussing an incident that occurred, I would like to make the disclaimer, I am speaking for myself and not in representation of OM. Last month during our clinic hours, we noticed that an officer was rummaging through a cart, the personal belongings of a homeless man who had momentarily stepped away and did not realize that this was happening. When we approached the officer to find if we could help him, he ignored the staff, did not acknowledge their existence, and proceeded to hover in the pavilion to watch the people who were seeking shelter that day. We did not notice a badge on this officer, and when approached him about it, he simply stated that we could refer to him as "officer." Going through someone's personal belongings without their knowledge or consent, I find to be grossly invasive and offensive. And I'm also taken aback by the attitude that the officer gave towards my cohorts. I find that the volunteers at Occupy Medical have been continuously kind and cooperative with the local authorities. And we've seen an uptick in EPD frequency, which is unsettling for many of our people who see us as a safe haven, especially towards the homeless youth who see us as a safe haven with no other option for shelter. And I continue to hear and witness stories of harassment and intimidation, especially towards the teenagers, including to, but not limited to, charging phones, reciting poetry, sitting, busking, sleeping, victimless crimes that end up banning them from public parks out of the public eye and away from access to services that they need access to and deserve access to. So I'm here to urge the city to lift the camping ban and to the EPD to cease their criminalization of homelessness and to legalize survival.
No, sorry. We don't clap. Sorry. I just want to tell you why. The reason is that we ask people neither to clap, boo, hiss, or anything else, because we want everybody, including you all, to be comfortable here. That's all right. All right. Sue Searleupi.
My name is Sue Searleupi. I have been living in George Brown's ward for close to 25 years. I am also the clinic manager for Occupy Medical. At the March 18 Occupy Medical Board meeting, we unanimously voted to request that you, city council, and the city management staff amend the law surrounding smoking in public parks. We would like to have signs posted in public parks that clearly state, "No smoking is allowed." We ask that this include not only cigarettes, cigars, and pipes, but also e-cigarettes and vapor pens. We have struggled with this issue for some time. We understand all too well that rules such as these are often used to target the very population that we serve. We also understand that rules such as these are implemented for incorrect assumptions. There is no evidence that limiting geography for smoking concurrently reduces smoking rates, just as there is no evidence that limiting the geography that people can sleep safely concurrently reduces the numbers of the unhoused. We are asking for smoke-free parks for the protection of the skyrocketing numbers of those with respiratory conditions such as asthma. We want public parks to be public-friendly. They should be healthy places for all. We request that public parks in Eugene city limits be determined smoke-free. We do not ask that sidewalks be smoke-free. A smoking parent should be able to simply step to the sidewalk to smoke with their child in clear view, to be able to properly dispose, and to be able to properly dispose of their cigarette butts. We follow the harm reduction code. We would like more receptacles for cigarette butts. We would also like to have hand sanitizers installed near trash bins. A smoker could deposit their debris, then wash their hands, dispense with the lingering residue. We would like secured Sharps containers installed as well. Safety is our primary concern. People smoke. As an organization that encourages public health, we wish that people would not do so, but the truth is that people do, and they do so for a variety of reasons. Again, reducing the places that people are allowed to smoke and safely dispose of their debris does not reduce smoking. We are not asking for increased fines either. We want public parks where children can play, people with asthma can read a book, and non-smokers as well as smokers can rest and enjoy the sunshine when we have it. Smokers should not be made to feel like criminals. They should and must be given a safe place to enjoy the outdoor spaces.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and thank everyone who's come to speak this evening. And for the person who was concerned about the officer not identifying himself, if you can get me that, or herself, if you can get me the time and the date, I can try to see if I can do something about it. Counselor Saret.
Counselor, Counselor Taylor was first.
No, Counselor Saret was first.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mike and myself.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone who came to speak. We really appreciate hearing from you all, including the diverse opinions on how we might address issues related to homelessness and lack of housing. But I actually wanted to respond to two specific things. One, to John Borowski, former Budget Committee Chair. And John also shared his comments about extending the public process for the Budget Committee, the email, so some of us had already seen that. And today, we had a planning meeting for the Budget Committee process, and we're not going to add an extra meeting, but we are most likely, I think, going to add extra time for public comment at the beginning of the second meeting on the 12th. And so on the 5th and the 12th, there'll be time for public comment, and again, there'll be time at the actual public hearing before the City Council takes action.
Flexibility of that, we need more.
And the mayor's reminding me, we also discussed that if we do need more time, we will add an additional meeting. So thanks for your comments. They were well made. In relation to the specific allegation of a police officer's actions on the downtown mall, I do believe that an unauthorized search of someone's personal belongings is actually unconstitutional and completely against department policy. I also suspect there is department policy around identifying yourself if you're actually on duty. So I would actually strongly encourage you to file a report with the Police Auditor's Office.
That's the way to do it.
That is why we have the Police Auditor's Office. It's an independent office that could look into the specific allegations and follow up on who was assigned that day, who was on duty, and hopefully bring some resolution to that complaint, because I agree with you, that is not the kind of activity I want our public servants, our public safety officers engaging in, and if indeed your allegation is true, then we would like some action on that.
Frankly, as to what I said to you, I'd just be sending you there anyway.
Yeah.
So that's good. That's a good advice. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Mr. Ward for his comments about the UGB. You're absolutely right that we can find other ways to accommodate housing. We don't need to invite more people to use up land which should be used for agriculture. To John Borowski, I tried to answer the email, and it was denied. I don't know if you didn't want to hear what I had to say or not, but delivery, I got delivery denied in the first 30 seconds, I think the message said. But what I said in my message was that I think there are plenty of opportunities for comment to the Budget Committee by telephone, by public forum, and during the council public forum, and even during our public forums which aren't specifically for the budget purposes, you can comment. And it seems to me that it's a waste of time to spend a lot of time in meetings with requiring our highly-paid staff to spend their time there when they could be doing something else. I'm glad to hear that the county is getting involved in the homeless situation, and as always, I appreciate John Brown's efforts to clean up the river. It seems kind of futile in a way, but I wish we still had something like Cooville where people could go without bothering people downtown or without polluting the river. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to the gentleman talking about Uber. Despite the PR campaign by Uber, the issue is not about embracing new technology. To the contrary, I think the new technology is actually very impressive, and it works. For all of you that are clicking the little button on the Uber emails that sends us a message, which hasn't worked, if you hadn't noticed, I would suggest trying something else, which is to send an email back to Uber and ask them why they won't do three simple safety things that we're asking them to do, which is, in essence, the standstill that we have. Those three simple things are: provide proof of auto insurance for all phases of the Uber service, just insurance, auto insurance; provide independently verified criminal background check, pretty straightforward; and provide vehicle safety inspections. That's it. That's all we're talking about. It's not about technology. It's not any of the other stuff that Uber's been talking about. It's those three simple things. Ask them why they won't provide those three things to the city, and then we can get Uber in Eugene, once we feel that they're safe. So.
They're doing it in Portland.
And, yeah, in Portland, they're basically doing that, and they're doing it in other cities. So I don't understand why this multi-billion-dollar corporation is holding you all hostage, because they won't provide these three simple safety things. So you might want to ask them that.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Counselor Saret addressing the first thing I was going to say about the police auditor, and they should be able to make sure that that's investigated appropriately. Number two, I don't exactly know how to make this request to the manager and to the attorney behind him, but I'd like to have your appraisal, your opinion, your thoughts on the subject raised by Mr. Dotson when he talks about electors and city streets and rights, and the particular documents he's referring to. I'm pretty sure you either have them or can get them, and if not, I'll help, but I'd like your opinion on the issue he's raised, please. Thanks.
Thank you all. I'm going to move on now to, we did the consent calendar during our earlier meeting, so now we're to the action item number three, which is the Eugene Springfield 2015 One-Year Action Plan, Council President.
I move to approve the Eugene Springfield 2015 One-Year Action Plan summary for use of federal CDBG and home funds in FY16, provided in Attachment B.
Second.
Moved and seconded. City Manager, did you want any, to give us a?
I can give you just a real quick overview of it. The City Council has asked to approve the Eugene Springfield 2015 One-Year Action Plan, and this plan allocates federal home and CDBG funds among the priorities approved by council in the 2015 Consolidated Plan. And the proposed allocation will advance affordable housing opportunities, support the provision of human services, and expand economic opportunities. The proposed uses of CDBG funds are recommended by the Eugene CDBG Advisory Committee, and the proposed uses of home funds are recommended by the Intergovernmental Housing Policy Board. Stephanie Jennings is available to answer questions that you may have.
Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, just quickly. In our previous work session, we had talked about the opportunity for other sources to be able to be helpful in the conversation about tiny and micro housing, and adoption of this plan does not forestall having that conversation. We've talked a little bit about that Housing Policy Board. There will be more conversations to have about that, but adoption of this plan would not prevent the ability to have that kind of flexibility, or do we even talk about it? And I'm sure Stephanie might have additional information on that.
So as Counselor Pryor said, part of what we do through this plan is we are essentially allocating buckets of funding for the different uses, and so part of what is allocated through this plan is a bucket of funding that will be allocated through future RFPs for housing development. And so as part of the conversation we typically have with Housing Policy Board, we also accept input from a wide variety of folks in terms of what we should prioritize in the development of that RFP. I will add, for the use of home funds, which is generally the source that is available to us to use for new construction, it is a program that has a very lengthy list of requirements, and so it's frequently very difficult to get more than one or two projects that meet the requirements of that particular program. So generally, when we do have discussions about the pros and cons of directing it in a particular direction, we try to sort of think of what are the likely outcomes, and are we going to get projects that are going to enable us to meet the pretty strict commitment and expenditure deadlines for that program.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Before we finish our business today, I wanted to ask, we had it on, took it off because of the schedule today, but I'm going to, we have enough time. If you have items of interest that you would like to share, we have time to go down the line here and ask. Counselor Pryor, do you have anything you wanted to share from the committee?
I was talking to you. Sorry. No, no, I heard what you were saying. I don't really have anything at this point. No, thank you.
Counselor Clark?
No.
Counselor Zelenka?
Not that I can think of right now.
Counselor Saret?
Yeah, I'll just share that the Police Commission is holding its planning retreat this Saturday. I unfortunately will not be able to attend, but nonetheless, the core group is meeting to work out a work plan for the coming year, and I'm sure they've been paying a lot of attention to the various points of public input that they've been getting over the last couple of months.
Evans?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. Even though I voted for this one-year action plan, I certainly hope that we will have a chance to discuss other ways we might spend the money that would be, would help more people, such as single-room occupancy housing. And I think we, every year, we approve it without really discussing it, and always there's a short time once we are asked to approve it. Another thing I'm very concerned about, we got the notice that stormwater and wastewater fees are going up. They will be added to utility bills, and there's a limited time when people can comment. Not that commenting would do any good, but I think this is related to keeping people in their homes, that if it costs more, I know they say for an average house, it will only cost a few cents. Stormwater fees, once we start watering, which we need to do in the summertime here, will skyrocket, because it depends on how much water you use, and if you, I think, isn't that true, City Manager?
No, the stormwater fees are a set fee based on impermeable surface.
No, I know, I'm sorry, I got the wrong ones.
Oh, wastewater fees.
Wastewater fees is what I intended to say. I had that written down here. Stormwater fees might be small, and that is somewhat progressive, because if you have a larger house, you pay more. But the wastewater fees are what will skyrocket when we start watering lawns and shrubs, which is, which we certainly need to do for fire prevention and for the good of the environment, for the good of the air. And I personally am quite concerned. I think most people won't realize it until it appears on their bill, that those fees are going up, and it will be on the E-Web bill. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
I was just going to respond one thing, and of course, we're also concerned with the cost increases, but a portion, or significant portion, of the wastewater fees are actually those that we're just passing on as a result of MWMC that we actually don't control locally as a city specifically. So we're, some of those are those that we're just passing on, that we're not actually setting or responsible for setting.
And we can't have any influence over them?
Well, I think the Counselor to your left has some influence over them, but, yeah.
Well, okay. Thanks.
Counselor Brown?
No, Mayor.
It's polling.
Yeah, a couple of things. I just thought I would follow up on Counselor Zelenka's comments about Uber. There are two other things that Uber is being required to do in the city of Portland. One is they are being required to pick up disabled passengers, which they have not been doing, and my understanding is they weren't doing that in Eugene. And also, the city of Portland, this is a pilot program that they've got going, is requiring that the drivers obtain a business license. So it's all about an even playing field, and it's not about the technology. Couple of things, unfortunately, I don't have my notes from my meetings. Traveling County is having its tourism industry celebration on Monday, May 4th. This is the first time they're doing it in the afternoon. It's actually 11:45 on Monday at the Holt Center. They used to do it in the evening. We're going to try it in the daytime now to try, see if we can get a better turnout. I've asked the city manager to get ahold of Christina Payne from the Lane Workforce Partnership to come and give us a brief introduction, or indoctrination, or explanation of what is happening with the Lane Workforce Partnership with the change in the Workforce Investment Act. It's not as simple as it used to be, but in a way, it is, it'll make things a lot simpler in the long run. And then finally, I want to thank the Public Works Department. The speed bumps, temporary speed bumps on Best Lane are in place, and I've received some positive comments about that. And on Arcadia, I see that they've temporarily painted spray paint where the speed cushions are going to be going between Harlow Road and Regency. There's going to be a total of eight speed cushions, and all these are traffic calmer as a result of public input into the Public Works Department.
Counselor Clark?
As well as the construction that's currently going on in Willa Kenzie.
Sorry, we were trying to figure out what a speed cushion is down here.
Yeah, a speed cushion, and I'll try to describe it. It goes the width of the road.
Right.
It's about seven feet wide.
Right.
And there are two areas that are not raised, as the rest of them are, that will allow the fire EMS vehicles to pass through without having to slow down to go up and over the raised area.
I see. Mr. Manager, I apologize. I know you had public work staff here earlier. I should have asked then, and I didn't, but I've had several constituents asking about something that I wanted to raise, and as long as we're doing this. The Good Pastor Island Road Bridge was just, or is nearly, complete as a part of the development that's happening on Good Pastor Island Road. On the, on the east side of the highway, as one leaves the bridge and travels east, on the north side, or the left, when you're heading in that direction, the sidewalk ends at the end of the bridge for about 40 yards before it begins again at the intersection of the next road. Many residents want to know why we didn't extend the sidewalk and connect it, or if it will soon be done, and if they could just send me a note on that, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay. And the only thing I would add is Ways and Means Committee was here in Springfield, and I went and testified on behalf of our funding for rail, and so keep on working on those, testifying on the things that we're trying to make happen. Thank you all very much.